I want to call the February 28, 2019 Pickle Board of Education meeting to order. Mr. Hiddle, please call the roll.
Mr. Patrizio.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mrs. McMackin.
Here.
Mr. Bostick.
Here.
Mr. Height.
Here. Please stand and join me for the pledge. And it's over this way. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all. Okay, you should have had an opportunity to review the minutes from the January 24 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, can we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, everybody in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also got the agenda in front of you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. And if there's no further discussion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Agenda's approved. The Upper Valley Career Center reports, really simple. We did, we had a very, just a routine meeting this Monday. About the only thing is, is we did approve the Yellowstone trip for our students for next fall. So that's, that's the Upper Valley report. Mr. Patrizio, a legislative report.
I apologize, I wasn't able to look into that today, so I do not have a report.
Okay. I have nothing on hearing of the public on agenda items, so we'll move on. Monthly financial reports. Mr. Hiddle, your turn.
Good evening. My report's short this meeting, so sent you the reports. Were there any questions on that?
On your HSA payment, what's the second half of that payment equal? Do you know?
How much it equals?
Yeah, the next half approximately.
I'll have to check that and get back with you on that. I don't know. Sure off the top of my head.
Can we split it down the middle?
Wanted it just for the...
It is, but I don't want to misstate the amount.
Well, you don't have to be perfect. You can give me an estimate. I'm, I'm good within $10,000.
I don't, I don't know that I have that, that number within $10,000. Because I don't, I don't specifically pay it. It's a lump sum and I, I don't know.
I just wanted to know for comparison reasons.
Yep, I will send that to you.
Are there any other questions? You have anything else to add, Mr. Hiddle?
Nope.
And we need a motion to approve the treasurer's reports.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Hiddle, please call the roll.
Mr. Patrizio.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Height.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Moving along to your discussion items, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. Seems like it's a short kind of meeting leading up to this, but we had a couple of discussion points that we really wanted to spend some time on, so we really reserved this opportunity for me to be able to have a couple of points. So we won't feature a school this week. We'll, we'll move that back to the next month. First, in my points, we've had several really, really good questions that are frequently asked questions now about the upcoming levy. So I want to make sure that I spend some time answering those because they're really, we put a lot of information out there and we want to make sure people are informed voters because there's a misconception that when they see levy, they're thinking more taxes. And we, this, this does not raise taxes, it actually lowers that. So I want to answer some of those frequently asked questions. And then later on in the agenda, we'll talk a little bit about the gymnasium roof, some things that are happening there. And we're going to have to make some decisions on that. So that's why we're to this point where we're going to spend some time on these because these were really important topics. So if I could get the overhead here on, the first thing I do want to go over is, will this make taxes go up? Will this levy do that? And the answer is no. If, if I could pick a headline, it would be this, this does not raise taxes because that's one of the biggest misconceptions that's out there. And I want to explain how this is, is going to lower that because we are asking for an additional millage so that we can do some very important work on our buildings. So I want to explain how that happens. So if you look at this, currently, under the Pickle Junior High School, we have 2.2 mills that are in place for that bond issue. And our current PI levy has 1.8 mills, which is a total of the four mills that you see right here. What we've done is we've worked really hard to figure out, how can we get the money that we need that will help us with the work that we need to get done without raising taxes because we knew that was important to our citizens. So what we've come up with for the proposed plan is to, to refinance the Pickle Junior High School bond issue, which ultimately is going to save taxpayers well over $800,000 alone, but it's also going to eliminate 2.2 mills of taxes once that's paid for. We still want to keep the 1.8 mills that are in place. We've done a study on our oldest three facilities to find out what are the projects that need to be done and upgraded so we don't have bigger, more costly problems later on. These are general, basic upgrades. We're not talking, making any building into the Taj Mahal. We're talking about things that are going to prevent bigger problems later on, and I'll give some examples. And based on that assessment through the architects that came through and did that, we calculated we need an additional 1.2 mills to get that important work done. So that leaves the 1.8, 1.2, which comes to three mills. So that's how we're able to get the extra dollars that we need to get that important work done while still reducing the levy down by one mill. I'm sorry, the taxes down by one mill. So again, we're not raising the taxes. We're, we're actually coming up with a plan that's going to allow us to lower them while still getting those, those funds in place. If I go up to this part of, of the sheet here, we can see the history of the levy. And back in 94, when it first was approved by the citizens, it was 3.5 mills. And then five years later, in 99, the citizens graciously re-approved that by reducing it down to two mills. And then again in 2004 for 1.8, 1.8, 1.8 again. Because the district, my predecessors, your predecessors have done a great job of only asking what they need. During this period of time, we were looking at new buildings. We knew we weren't going to spend a lot of money in old facilities, but as a consequence of that, we also didn't have funds to put into the high school, which is now almost 40 years old, the junior high school, which is going to be about 20. And we also have the Alexander Stadium, believe it or not, it's coming up on, on 18 years as well. So that's, that's why we are in that position now where we are going to be, if this passes, we'll be up to three mills here, but you can still see that downward trend in the history. And again, I want to point out that we have not historically asked for more than what we really need in that, that area. So that's one of the most important questions that I have received. A few other ones. What are we spending the money on? So currently, you can see how much money that this permanent improvement fund collects. It's 678,946. We commit 200,000 annually to our bus fleet, and that's so we can keep that in, in a rotation. And that's very important because by the time we get a bus through that rotation, it's pretty much been spent. We utilized it about as much as we can, and we're either putting several dollars into it, or it's no longer running the way we need it to safely to make sure we're transporting students. And then back in 2011, we had to put in a new HVAC system to the aging system that was at the high school. Rather than going back and asking for additional taxpayers, they were able to do a different system, which was a lease program, which now we are paying for, which is 315,441. So we're committed to spending those dollars annually out of that money that we're collecting right here through the permanent improvement levy. That leaves us with 164,505 for all the maintenance, most importantly, the safety work that we're doing in our buildings. So some examples, just so you can see what 164 will give us, down below here, these are just some recent things that we've done. So we've had to do some replacement work on our roof at the high school. We're still in phase two of, of three of the phases, and we'll talk more about a roof later, but we're talking over a million dollars worth of work already we've had to put into there. Replacing the original student furniture that was at the high school. It was so outdated and it was again 40 years old, it just was not even safe for some kids to sit in. So that was 280,000. We had to replace the fire alarm system. It became outdated to the point where it was not passing inspections. We had no choice. We had to spend 325,575 on that. Again, we renovated the front entryways for safety reasons at the junior high and high school. Both of those buildings were built well before 99 and Columbine. When that happened, it's a whole different structure now, so we had to make sure those safety entrance ways were built differently. And so on. You can see some other things on the list, and I just, I wanted to point out that 164,000 really is a lot of money. We're very blessed to have that, but it gets spent rather quickly when you look at some of the progress we've had to make in some of the buildings that, that again are aging. So that's what we are spending that money on. You can also go to our levy website and see a full list of things that the architects have recommended for us to work on now so they don't become more costly later on. One of the questions people are asking is, will the passage of this levy provide more safety to the district's students and the staff? And the answer is yes. We have done some, what I believe, very successful, very successful additions to the work that we've put into our, our buildings, and we're seeing some great results. I'll just give you a quick rundown of a few of those. We did put in a raptor system, which allows us to check backgrounds of people that come into our buildings. We have been able to stop individuals from getting into our buildings that have had backgrounds that were not permissible in our buildings. And when that happens, when we run their ID, I get a text, Mr. Lyons gets a text, the principal gets a text immediately. We are right there responding right away. So that's been a very successful piece we've already had. Even if we only catch one person, which we, we had more, it would have been worth the money. We have a camera system in place that is supervised, it's monitored. So somebody sits there and watches people coming in and out of the entryways, in our parking lots, in our major hallways. We can look for trends of students walking in and out of doors and what they're doing as a result of going in and out of doors. So we've, we've really benefited from that system. If you look at this picture, you can just see the new entrance way we have at the junior high school. Again, it used to be you walked in, you had full access to the building. Now there's a vestibule, if you will, where they come in, they can come up here to the desk and be still, I think, very politely greeted by our, our great secretarial staff there and still be contained in an area without having full access to the building. Seems weird to see this picture for safety, but we had no backup system if the electric went out at the stadium. So if that happened, people would have had to try to get to the stadium in a crowd form with no lights. So we had to put a, a system in place that allowed for a backup generator to turn on if the electric went off for any reason. We've done some door-window applications that allows classrooms to look outside the hallway, but people can't look inside. They've been very, not only successful in decorating the, the doors with effective messages, but they, they're highly effective in terms of protecting students, staff from being visible. Our new fire alarm system you heard me talk about. We also had to add some additional ways for our senior citizens, as well as our handicapped people, to be able to get into the stadium successfully because at big events, even some of the larger events that other districts were doing, that we were hosting for some of the playoff games, we simply did not have enough handicapped parking. So this is a new, just area, in the parking lot area off to the side here where people can come in and do a drop-off area. So just some, some very basic examples. People always ask, what are the additional things that need to happen? We are following all the guidelines that the state and federal government are giving us. I don't always tell what those pieces are because I don't want to leave us vulnerable. I can tell you the most important things that were very much on the top of that list have been completed. There are a few other things we've identified and a few things on that list that we still want to do that I think will, will really shore up some, some of the safety issues. This is a question we get a lot, is, is a mill worth a million dollars? No. A mill is just a unit. It's what we defined as one-tenth of a percent or one-tenth of a cent in cash terms. So just to make it simple for this, a median valued house in our district is about 100,000. So if this levy were to pass, it would make it about 30 cents a day or 35 dollars a year for one of those homeowners. Far cry from a million dollars. This is something we'll talk a little bit more about later as well, but, so what if the levy fails? People want to know what happens. Well, again, we're, we're looking at projects that are ultimately going to need to be done. If we don't do them, it's going to make it worse for us. We're going to have bigger, more costly problems later on. The most current problem right now we're facing, and we've had a lot of difficulty with, is the gym roof at the high school is leaking very badly. It literally, when it rains, looks like somebody poured spaghetti in a strainer and it's just draining in your sink. And we've done everything we can to make sure the floor is protected because you know, if that gets wet and as it dries, it begins to warp, and that's a whole new expense that we don't want to take care of. So in this picture, you can see just what happened. This was two nights before the last event we had there. We spent a lot of time mopping the floor that night. We were there till I think 11:30 with trash cans and buckets, and you can see some tarps in the background here. And ultimately, it went into the 500 wing because of how it ran down the walls and it started coming through the ceiling there. You can see how some of the ceiling tiles started coming down, but more importantly, you can see some of the, the electric work that was up in there. So we had to get an electrician to come out and make sure that it wasn't going to do anything to some of the things that are mounted up there in terms of teacher tools that they're using. So we had to do a lot of cleanup. Some of the classrooms became not available for use the next day because we still had water that was leaking in that 500 wing area. As a reminder, we've done all the roof work at the high school with the exception of this last section. It was already slated to get done this summer. It just can't come fast enough. So the gymnasium and the 500 wing is the last area that needs the roof, but it's, it's just in a really bad spot right now. Here is the whole 500 wing hallway. There's water on the floor here. You can see it started busting through this area. And again, all of our fiber networks are electric, our HVAC system, all of that runs right through there. So we had grave concern that what was that water doing to all of that equipment that was up above the ceiling? So a lot of things like that. Here's a few other examples that we're facing. This is the wall at the stadium, and you can see a crack forming right here, and it's following the mortar right there, but here's one where it does not follow the mortar joints and it's taking its own direction. And what that tells us is some of the foundation pieces are sinking, and they're going to have to get in there and really kind of build that up in order to prevent that from happening any further. And if we don't fix that, moisture's going to get between that block and the interior block, causing a lot bigger issues for us later. So again, it, it's not that we're trying to, to spend money, you know, to make it look nicer, it's we've got some general things we have to do to, to prevent bigger problems later. We mentioned last year and had to do an emergency piece to get the water out between the high school's outer envelope and interior block work. And we did that as soon as we could. We had a lot of water and moisture in there, but as a result, you can see around the windows, this is just one photo I have here tonight. If you go to the levy website, you can see a lot more, but the block work inside is cracking. The moisture caused all the paint to blister, and it's just causing a lot of problems around the windows in general, where some of them have rusted. And you can literally, it looks like some of them upstairs, you can just push right through and they'll, they'll come out. So we, we've got to get those windows corrected in that interior block so more moisture doesn't get in there and cause bigger problems. At the high school, we've got wooden, I'm sorry, junior high, in the stairwells, there are some wooden frames here that have made these walls unstable, and you can see the cracks that are happening there as well, that we're going to have to get fixed without more problems developing. So that's what we plan to spend the money on, is really fixing things that are, you know, again, going to not cause bigger problems later on. One is, that we get a lot, is are you really staying in budget? Are you conserving money? And, and I can say very definitively yes on that. In fact, I, I, I really think this is some of the work that Jeremy and I find to be the most exciting is because when you find ways to save money, that means we can repurpose that into other projects that we really need to get done. And that's how we've been able to afford some of this work. So here's just some of the examples. We've talked about the Honeywell Energy Savings Project and how much money that's keeping into the district, saving taxpayers. The energy demand rebates that we did, that was just simply filling out an application, and we got that money that came to us for, for doing nothing other than filling out paperwork. Our premier health partnership, we just received our first check yesterday for 75,000. And again, that can go into our sports facilities. So this is over a five-year period, all that money coming to us for just having a great partnership with them. The downsizing and coming to the board relocation, again, has saved us an estimated 100,000 annually, which is really huge. Not only do we get a great facility that fits us perfectly, but we're saving that money. Again, refinancing the bond issue, you can see exactly how much that saved us. And we've also eliminated the 2.2 mills, which is a really big asset to this plan. We wrote a grant for new buses last year. We still bought two like we normally do, but as a result of the grant, we were able to get two new additional buses. And then most recently, one of the things that we had to get done, you can see in this photo, is the stage at the high school. It has soft wood to it. Again, 40 years old, it's starting to splinter. And then in some places, it's got some divots inside there, not safe for kids in certain play productions to be barefoot or in stockings. We had some issues that we had to work through in terms of covering that up for certain productions. We just received the Lundgaard Foundation grant to fix that flooring back there at the tune of 35,000. So we're very thrilled that they were able to support that because this was something that we had to wait. It wasn't really at the top of our list. We were doing some makeshift things, but it also wasn't something that we wanted to wait too long for. A lot of equipment rolling across that stage. Finally, one of the questions I get a lot is, will this levy make my rent increase? And the answer is, is no. Any rent increases would not be as a result of this levy because again, we're reducing property taxes as a result of the plan that we put in place. So I can pretty definitively say no, it would not be the levy that would cause that to happen. Finally, this isn't so much a frequently asked question, but how do, how do we get answers to more questions? I want to make sure people know that they can get facts about the levy by coming to this website right here, and it's just citizensforqualitypickleschools.org. There's a, a video there that explains a lot of things. There are all the frequently asked questions that we get. We've had people respond. There's a contact us there. They can click the link and it will come directly to myself as well as the treasurer. We respond as soon as we can with all the facts that we can find for them, and we encourage them to continue to, to ask us if they have more questions. But they can certainly contact me at any time, the treasurer at any time, and then our, our board president. We will get any answer that we can. And again, our main purpose is to make sure people are informed voters with the facts that are out there. So we just want to make sure we're giving everything that we can. We have a drumbeat coming up, probably, I think, the first week of April. It'll be all focused on the levy. The last drumbeat had an article in there about the levy, and we'll be speaking at groups, and we would be happy to come to any group if anybody wanted to host an opportunity for us to come and talk and answer any questions that, that we possibly can as well. So those are the big ones. Those are the big questions that most people ask. Are there any questions from anything that you see there that you would like more information on, or any questions that you're hearing from the community?
One of the things I've, I've heard several times is, you know, why do we, why do we need to do this now? And what I equate that to is, well, if you don't take care of your house, what, what happens?
Yeah.
And you know, we don't always want to put that new roof on a house. We don't want to necessarily paint, but if we don't do those sorts of things, that's where we are. We're playing catch-up. And this is, I, I jokingly tell people, remember, the new high school is our oldest building.
Yeah, it is.
And there, there's work that needs to be done.
And it's, it's really important that we get that, that work done so again, it doesn't cause bigger problems later on.
That's the biggest thing I, that's, and once you, you, I, I talked with somebody about that, they said, oh yeah, that, they understand that.
Some of this work just needs to be done. I mean, the junior high windows are, are leaking.
Yeah.
And that building's only 20 years old, but that has problems with roofing, that has problems with leaking, and it looks like there's some block problems in that building.
Exactly.
And then with the high school, entire interior hasn't been really done since it's been open. The lockers are outdated, the kids can't even get their jackets in them, and they don't use them.
Yeah.
The, it needs to be completely repainting. And we have gone out, I mean, Dwayne and the Career Center and the school system have gone together, and they're going to repurpose the 500 wing for Career Center classes where we're going to have an LPN program, and is engineering still going to belong in there?
And that has a direct impact on our academics because the state has finally opened up the new graduation requirements, other opportunities for students to earn their diplomas. So it's not just passing a state test anymore. We can get them real career credentials and get them into some programming that will, will help them earn a diploma and be successful beyond our doors. And, and partnering with the Career Center has been amazing. They've got great ideas, they've got great curriculum, they're going to help with some of the funding issues, and it's going to make a really big difference for our high school students.
The bathrooms in the high school are the originals.
They're not ADA accessible at all.
They're not ADA accessible. The floor and the commons, they don't even make the tile that they have there anymore. So, you know, it's just work that has to be done. And unfortunately, it's not like your home where a few thousand dollars is going to cut it. It's a few million dollars. And I know people find that hard to believe, but it doesn't take much. The roof, the gym roof's going to cost us probably close to half a million dollars for, is my guess. Is that right?
It's going to be... 270,000 just for the gym roof.
Right, but then you have the 500 wing, which is another...
At least another 270-ish thousand dollars.
So...
Mark's here, who knows? Has a guess.
Yeah. It's, it's important to point out too that some of the work is contingent on other pieces, so we really can't fix the windows until we're ready to do the block work, but we need money for both of them.
Right.
We need to do an electrical upgrade in the cafeteria, but it's under the floor. So we can't tear up the floor to do the electric work until we're ready to fix both of those pieces because we can't fix the electric and just leave the floor unfinished. So that, that leads to costly kind of endeavors in terms of one thing leading into the next. So that's, that's an important part of why we're doing it right now as well.
Going back real briefly to the Career Center partnership, that is, this partnership that we're doing is one of the very first in Ohio. And there's a lot of other schools we're looking at, say, boy, we wish we had that.
Yeah.
So you know, this, this is, this is something where we're, we're ahead of, we're way ahead of the curve on this one.
We have a lot of students that want career pathways, but they want to stay at the high school because they want to be in our great, you know, show choir, our band program, some of the other events we have. They may not want to leave their friends, but this will give them an opportunity to get those pathways while remaining students at, at, at the high school level. So we're, we're thrilled with it. It really repurposes that wing that was an old shop area. We've been using the classroom space, but not to its fullest extent, so this gives us that chance to do that.
We also have some great partners that have some students working already out in the community.
Yes. Yeah, that's, that's been a great success. The success bound program that's working at the high school is going really well.
The only thing I had heard was a question about, well, why did you do this part of the roof and that part? And, and you know, we just had to do as it came. These things just occurred and we had to do them in succession.
It's having money to do it, it's, it's working around operations of the building is, is a really key piece, and it was the amount of time we needed to get it done in that window of opportunity we had. So it's a massive roof. So it's a massive roof. Doing that whole thing over one summer just would have never.
And we talked about that in great length.
Mark was going to.
We did three, we decided to do it over three years. And Mark and his group were the ones that recommended the sections to go forward with, you know, it's one of those things we were planning. But, I mean, it was one of those things we planned out. And of course, you know, we were planning on replacing it this summer, and all the rain comes this winter.
Here's the bigger, the bigger anomaly on that was when the engineers came and looked at all the projects, the roof was 10 years out. We were not even going to touch the roof for another 10 years. We thought we had 10 more years on that roof until a couple of years ago it started leaking on us. And then we found the whole issue with the envelope. And that was, again, an example of if we don't fix it now, it's going to be a big problem later on. So we had to move all that ahead, which pushed some of these projects back. Now, those projects are starting to rear up and become a big priority for us as well.
Well, I think one of the things we did is we hired Jeff Meyer, who's a local construction contractor, and he's kind of given us recommendations. He brought on these guys who have done the roof, and they've done a fantastic job for us. And they also told, you know, they also told us, these were your problems with your roof. There's no sense in going on the inside.
Yeah.
Until you get your outside cleaned up. And so the front, the brickwork looks the best it's looked since it opened. And I'm sure two of the three sections look the best, the roof looked the best it has since it opened.
Yeah. We'll talk more about roof when we get to the new business, but that's, those are the biggest questions I keep getting over and over and over. And we're trying to get as much information out there as we can. And I thought this would be a good chance to do that and find out if you're hearing questions as well and if we need to get some answers out there. So, but again, just to the public, let me know. We'll come and talk. We'll answer any question we can. We'll get you all the information that we can as fast as we can.
That was good, good you shared that tonight. Thank you.
Sure. I'd like to recommend the board to approve the list of donations. We did get some donations from the WPTW Holiday Tournament that happens every year. We almost had to cancel that because of rain coming through, so I'm glad we got that to happen. The Pittcocks donated some money to the athletic department, Miami Valley Steel, Pioneer Electric, and Cargill all donated some projects or money to the district. And we really appreciate that greatly. And that's all I have for my approval.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the, you have anything else? Nothing else on your agenda?
Nothing else, no.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the donations?
So maybe.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I assume you'll write the appropriate thank you letters?
Yes.
Okay. If all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And personnel agenda?
Short, I'm going to spend a little bit of time on the parent mentor. We have Ashley here, our new hire. I want to do a couple of thank yous quickly. Scott Blooms spends a ton of time on federal programming, CCIP, securing this grant that pays for this position. So thank you. Amy, this position has to be the right person. We know that. She spent a lot of time finding candidates that we can meet with and organizing that process. And ultimately got us to a point where we could bring Ashley on board for our parent mentor. And a quick overview, and this will be the guy that's not really with any of this, it's going to be, this person serves as both an advocate for the parents and for the district as for our students with special needs. And they provide truly mentorship for those people. And Ashley and I were talking the other day, how wide-eyed folks are when their kid's four years old or five years old, they've never been through that experience. And then you tell them, look, this is going to happen, and they need somebody to go through that or walk through that with them. And that's going to be Ashley. Welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you agree with that?
Sure.
Yep. I'm Ashley Thorian. I'm delighted to be here. Thank you to the board and the district for having me. I do have a special little fellow of my own. He's in second grade at Spring Creek, and he's given me a new life of opportunities. And to be able to share that with the other families in the district is amazing. So I'm delighted to be here. Thank you.
Who is a superstar, her little one over there? He's an amazing young man.
He got under your skin, that's what it was. He's got you on his finger.
And he couldn't ever get me out of that. We love him. We love him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's the agenda. Questions?
Are there any questions on anything else on the personnel agenda? If not, do we have a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Mr. Hiddle, please call the roll on this one.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Patrizio.
Aye.
Mrs. Mc Mackin.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye.
Mr. Height.
Aye. Motion carries. No old business to come before the board?
Nope.
And we do have some new business.
Some new business. I'll call Mark up in just a moment, but I want to just show a few more photos. If we could bring those up here. So this came about, again, that was last week. We've actually had it going on for a while, but last week it got about as bad as we could. And we went out thinking it was starting there. We started covering the floor as much as we could, as fast as we could. And then we just kept finding water everywhere. And we were there for quite a while. Again, it's a very big concern of ours to protect that floor. It's the original wood still. We don't want to have to go through and replace that. That would be a cost that would be unnecessary at that. So our hope is that we've covered it fast enough and no moisture got under there because as that dries out, then that's going to cause those boards to be warped. So we have one more event that we have to do, I believe it's this Saturday. One of my things before I forget it is, you know, if it rains at graduation, we move it to the gym. We would be no more drier in the gym if we held that there now than if we just stayed outside. So I'm sure the seniors are thinking, don't fix the roof, we'll just stay outside. But you should know that we're going to have to make some kind of a decision. We would have no dry ability to do the graduation in there right now. And I'm talking in the seats as well as where the kids would be. So that's something for us to think about. This is upstairs. I don't know, can we dim that light over there just so that people here can see a little bit better? What's happening is the space right here is our HVAC system. You can see the water that's all on the floor here, it's dripping on these. It's literally just coming down from the ceiling everywhere, but it's running down this wall, which then goes right through the floor, and then it's just landing down into the classroom space, locker rooms, and so on.
South side above the 500 wing there.
And it's just, it's just coming in everywhere. It's running down beams, so it's hitting all locations. It's not just dripping to the floor. It's literally, we found water in places that surprised us. You can see it's starting to come through the ceiling. Again, it's coming around the ductwork. And eventually, these tiles, you can imagine, just shredded into pieces and fell down to the ground. And that, again, negated the ability to use that classroom space. We had to get all that cleaned up. But it also gave us the chance to get up there and see what kind of damage it was doing or what it was touching so we could get the right people there to make sure, you know, we weren't doing something more damaging to what was up above the tiles. So we got as much of the water cleaned up as we could and, you know, got buckets and trash cans. Our trash, our, I'm sorry, our custodians worked mostly through the night doing that rather than cleaning the building those couple nights because we just had water going everywhere. Even after it stopped raining, the water continued because you've got insulation now that is soaked, you've got water that's laying up there. It was just all over the place.
Has it affected the Indian Nation Station?
It has not. It's not gotten in that area. It's mostly on this side right over here, closest to the gym. So the classroom space over on this side of the hallway has not been affected yet. Again, we had some electricians coming out because we have some projectors and electrical work up there. You can see where some of the tile had fallen. We cleaned up most of it, but we did have some more we had to clean up. We had to get up on the roof and literally just start shoveling snow away and making sure that we got as much water that we could. They had squeegees that they were just trying to get water off the roof. So that's, we had to call some people, lend some of our custodians to come in to do that, that work to get as much of that off there as we could.
I think it's important to say, too, Mark will echo this, that white roof when you're up there, that's a dangerous, dangerous up there at that time.
So those are just the photos that I have. If we can get the lights on there. Mark Smits is from Kramer Roofing. Mark has done a lot of the work, and I will praise him because I don't care what time of the night it is or what the event is. We have called him, and he has been there with some solution, whether it be temporary or talking to us long-term. He has saved us. We would have lost some major revenue if we had to turn away all those basketball tournaments. And what we've got going this Saturday, WPTW tournament that we had, we would have lost some big opportunities and sponsorships if we would have had to turn people away. So he came up with some really quick fixes, but they're temporary at best. So I'm going to let him talk a little bit about the technicalities of what's up there. And then ultimately, we're going to have to make a decision if we need to move faster on this roof work than waiting the summer. So that's, that's why I'm bringing this to you is I need your thoughts in terms of what you want to do as a board. Mark, would you mind coming up and sharing with us some of the details you know?
Sure. In my defense, Jeff Meyer's defense, three years ago when we did the assessment and did all the background work and looked at things, the 500 wing and the gymnasium were by far the best roofs in the facility. So what you're seeing that's taking place here in the gymnasium and the 500 wing would be down in the educational areas. So I stand by what I thought then.
I'm not criticizing you guys. You don't have to worry about that. Yeah, we just listened to you, which was worse. I understand that.
Yeah. So, but this ends just, the one picture in there with all the buckets and the 500 wing along the wall, that's the, those are masonry issues. And Jeff has taken care of those on the other sections. We're just not there yet. So again, when you do these roofs and things, you're not just putting a roof on or you're not just putting, doing masonry restoration work. What you're trying to do is build an envelope for the facility. And I think we've done an awfully good job on those two other sections because with all this rain and stuff that we've had, a big issue here forever was the masonry, that it was actually leaching into the building. And that has all been resolved because that's an age-old question ever since this, the high school was built, in my estimation. So what you got there in a gymnasium now is that roof is just, it just went to hell. It's literally leaching through the roof membrane. And we've done some temporary type stuff. You stop it, and then it moves. This last weekend, Chip called me during the last game, he had a little storm come through, and he had water pouring in, in the hallway, off the stands there in the gymnasium. Well, that leak was out towards the court a week before that. Now it moved down there. Saturday night, it, the last game, he had water coming in there. So we hung around after the game and stuff and put, did some stuff with some plastic and stuff to protect it for overnight because I knew there was a big rainstorm coming in Saturday night. Well, he had a big, and it did come through, but it didn't leak. So it doesn't make any sense why, when, what's going on. But irregardless, the roof does need done. There's nothing, a quick fix, it's going to last long-term. But until that roof is put on, that floor should be covered with plastic every night.
Mark, what's the estimate? Do you have an estimate for that roof yet or not?
Uh, yeah, I've got a hard cost.
It's 269,212 dollars.
And that fall, Jeremy's checked me on the square foot price.
I'd like to say something about you and Jeff. I think you guys have done an outstanding job with the roof that you put on and also the brickwork. You know, when I said, you know, this is what we, we thought we had three years, I think everybody did, and it just didn't happen. You know, who knew six months before we were going to replace it, it would just fall apart on us like it has? I feel that we should make it an emergency resolution and make a motion not to go out for bids and have it. When can you begin?
When can we begin?
Yes.
I'll start ordering materials tomorrow. I've done some preliminary work. I think I can have everything within a week.
I'd like to make a motion to declare an emergency and ask for the roof to begin repaired immediately.
Hey, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I don't think there's any question we need to get this done because what would it cost to put a new floor down if that floor gets?
You don't.
Yeah. That's more than that roof.
More than the roof.
Yeah.
Times four.
Well, it's not just floor either. You've got masonry now because there's still going to be freezing and insulation, possible wiring. We've got to cover it.
Yeah.
We've got to get it on.
Is there a legal issue with not taking it out for bid?
So what you've asked to do is file an emergency resolution. I don't have that typed up. I will do that. If you pass it through, we'll operate it as if the resolution existed. So there is a legal formal resolution that does pass that up. But it is legal to do this, yes.
And if we do it as an emergency motion, we can do it that way.
I will pull out the one we used for the envelope issue that we had, that we had to get fixed before it rained. I mean, it just happens. There's some times where it doesn't. I mean, what you're doing is protecting a million-plus-dollar basketball court for something we were going to fix in five months anyways. So, I mean, it's not something that wasn't going to happen, but it's just, it's gotten so bad that there's not really a great, another great option to give you at this point.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Hiddle, please call the roll.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mrs. Mc Mackin.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye.
Mr. Height.
Aye.
Mr. Patrizio.
I just saw Rob's face, I wanted to make sure because Mark and I talked about this. He might be thinking, what are we going to do with like PE and those kinds of things? We're going to be able to function in the gym. Correct. So that's not going to impact our operations during the day.
How do you protect the flooring while you're working on it? I'm just kind of curious how that happens.
While we're up there working on it?
Yeah, you're just going to have a tarp on the floor the whole time or?
Well, I'm not leaving every night unless, until the damn thing's watertight for the first thing. I mean, that's how we operate. But as far as, do you need anything down on the floor overnight? No, but you do until we get that roof area covered every night.
We are, we are keeping it covered.
And then I talk with, I bet I stayed in pretty close contact with Chip on that. So we've already discussed what the plan of attack is for this weekend is, once they're done with the games on Saturday, they get it cleaned up, we're going to push the bleachers in and plastic that because they're calling for three to five inches of snow Sunday night, Sunday evening, so.
It's actually increased now.
Yeah.
We'll get the snow off of the roof today.
So it has to be protected.
And why do you say the snow's worse than the rain, is that?
It's heavy.
Yeah, for some odd reason. And like I said, the early rain Saturday night leaked inside the building. The big storm overnight, he didn't get a drop in. Because I met him out there Sunday morning.
You'll start your work then?
In that area.
No, I mean, when would you start date-wise?
Uh, I would like to think within a couple of weeks. Next week looks bad because the temperatures are supposed to be in the teens most of the week. And then that gives me a little time to get materials on site.
But we're just talking about the gymnasium. This is the cost for the gymnasium.
Correct.
So then we're just.
How about the 500 wing?
We'll do the 500 wing like we normally had planned.
It'll be bid out. It'll go through the bidding process.
So you have the stairwells to the gymnasium, you have the 500 wing left, and you have So you have the stairwells to the gymnasium. You have the 500 wing left, and you have the front office, that area. So-
All the bids, all the drawings and the bidding stuff is actually in process and getting finished up at the architect. It was already gonna, I mean, it was getting ready to be put out for bid for the summer. So that stuff is already in process.
Well, let me ask you this. And we all know he's gonna be the lowest bidder. But if you come in as the lowest bidder, can you just continue on with the others that we're going to do? If, I don't know when the bids coming in, but-
Well, we'll just accelerate the process. I mean, that's, I mean, I've already talked to our architect Jonathan, and he just said, let me know what the board, what direction the board wants to head. I mean, you could've easily said, we're gonna wait it out and still keep the old plan or whatever. So we didn't make assumptions as to what we were going to do next.
Well, I mean, as far as with the other two stacks, I assume we're doing the office and the 500 wing in here. If, how long is it before we have the bids on those?
He would probably have that stuff ready to send out to bid within, by the end of next week.
Mark, how long will it take to do the gym roof?
And then it takes about four weeks after that.
If we have some decent weather, it'll take, I wanna get the base ply on, the first ply where it'll get you watertight within two weeks. And then we'll start there in that area where all the, these problems are. The big, the major problems.
You'd be done with that by late April.
Yeah, I, yeah, I better be. I got a few other places to be too.
It may, what I'm saying is it may go right into the natural process anyways. Key right now is getting the roof over the gym protected because we do not wanna replace that gym.
And you are putting a new roof on that, correct?
Correct. But the other thing, when you start talking in terms of going in the 500 wing and some of those other places, is there's those masonry issues that Jeff has to literally, the mason has to come in, take brick out and lay. It's not real good bricklaying weather right now either.
The other thing is because the HVAC work we're doing in the 500 wing, there's a lot of protrusions through the roof that we've got. We're removing tons of them. So-
We're all right if that just gets done in the summer.
It needs to be, yeah.
I think it'll naturally flow into that.
It should time out.
We don't wanna perforate, put that roof on now and then have to do perforations through the new roof.
Right.
Correct.
And the bids, the bid packages for the 500 wing renovation stuff we're doing with the HVAC is, they're out right now. So they were advertised on Sunday in the paper and they're also on the website. So that information is available. So if there are HVAC people who wanna look into that, we do have a bid package on the website.
Very good. Thank you.
We're hurrying up, but it sounds like it's gonna fit, fit together pretty well in the long run.
Yeah. I think its sequence is better that way, to be honest with you.
Oh, for phys ed, for weight training, when him carries equipment, his material up to the roof.
Just paperwork with that.
So I guess, are you telling me to go ahead and get things ordered?
Yes.
And lined up?
I will get everything put together and I will get this sorted.
Okay, so I'm gonna start getting things in place tomorrow and getting stuff, trucks rolling. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need me to stick around? As much as I love education.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you for your input on that. The only other thing I have is there's some policy board updates, and I'll just review quickly. Some of them had the old language of no child left behind. That's getting updated with the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. So it's just a matter of language, but none of the information changed. There is that bill that came through that said you cannot suspend K through three students next year. And the more they continue to study that, they've added some additional things like if a student has a bomb threat at that level, they can be suspended. So that's new. And then they've added a piece where they want districts to reduce the number of expulsions each year at that level. So you would, you would take the number of expulsions you had at K through three this year, and you're supposed to reduce it by a certain percentage. And they're gonna start tracking that until it obviously gets to zeros, what they're hoping.
So is the state legislature gonna give us more money for mental health issues for these kids?
That would be great, but no. It's not gonna happen.
And that's what, so the public's aware. One of the things that I think I've seen since I've even been on the board, is there seems to be an increased number of kids. Maybe I'm making, I don't think I'm making it up, from kindergarten to third to fourth grade that have mental health issues. And nobody wants, there isn't enough resources out there to address this.
There isn't, and they're still trying to figure out how that fits in education. We have superintendent meetings all year long about this very topic. We've had principals there. We're not the only ones feeling the crunch. I mean, even small districts that have never had these problems are dealing with K through three, mental health kinds of issues that we've never dealt with before. And we don't even have students yet coming to us that have been through this whole drug opioid thing that's been happening. So there's a new generation of kids out there that we still haven't figured out what's coming our way and what to deal with on that. So there's a lot coming our way early on. And if we don't address it early on, the problem only compounds.
Well, going to what Frank said, if I remember right, I was just reading this a couple days ago, they're saying like one in four or five kids have a mental health issue of some kind. So that's, that's a huge population when you think about that.
Well, some people say, oh, it doesn't exist. Well, yeah, when you have kids coming into kindergarten, first grade, destroying classrooms, throwing desks around, and doing some of the things I hear, that's not normal behavior.
No. It's very real. And like I said, it's not just a pickle problem. It is, it's becoming systemic. It is, it really is. But we are working on some ideas for that. And we actually just met with Washington the other day. We'll be meeting with Spring Creek pretty soon. Amy's got some information she's done some, some good work on. And we're trying to put a lot, a lot of thinking to this because obviously there's cost to it as well. So we're trying to figure out, how do we do some shifting or come up with some unique ways of funding this important position in our schools. The competitive bidding process just talks about things over fifty thousand dollars now. That's been added. There's some new information on crowdfunding and why it's important that most of the schools not do that, not knowing where the funding sources are coming from. There's also the tracking information piece where, you know, if teachers run out and do that on their own without making the schools alert to it, then the resources come in that aren't being tracked and so on. So board policy's been updated for that. They've added the addition of apps to, to the policy that talks about website use because there are so many apps out there now. And that is just as applicable of following a policy as websites. So we added that piece in. And then dietary restrictions to 504 plans. Typically, if a kid comes to school and says, I lactose intolerant, I can't have milk, we just accommodate. Schools will do that. This doesn't mandate it, but it says it can be added to a 504 now. So if we have a kid that's allergic to weed or anything, we could, we could add it to that. And that just gives good documentation that follows that student. So no matter where they land, if they're transient, it will have that information and the school will know there's a dietary restriction. So that's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. And I have nothing on hearing of the public on non-agenda items. And our next regular meeting is Wednesday. That is, the change is on Wednesday, the March 20th, 6:00 PM here. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Take care.